Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like, at this point, to ask Ms. Lydia Sampson to come forward to open the November 21st meeting of the Board of Education. Ms. Sampson, if you'll come forward. Is she here?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Sampson. I am a senior at Largo High School and the captain of the peer forward team. I am also currently in the National Society of High School Scholars. As a participant in the peer forward team, I help students with their college process, which includes scholarship applications, personal statements, and resumes. I have taken many AP classes over my four-year tenure at Largo High School, including my favorite, the Health and Bio Program. I have been able to maintain a 4.1 GPA since ninth grade. I also enjoy my time being a part of the Largo Cheerleading Program, of which I have won numerous awards in various competitions. My long-term goal is to become a surgeon and to enjoy the medical field. I am a proud senior at Largo High School, and I am ready for college. Now, I want to welcome you to the November 21st, 2019 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. Highlights this evening will include the news break, PGCPS at a glance. Additionally, under govern- governance, the Board of Education will vote on the boundary and grade structure improvements for the school year 2020 through 2021. Please continue to check the- to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the November 21st, 2019 Board of Education meeting will begin.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson, on behalf of the Board for that introduction. Before we formally begin our meeting, I want to ask everyone to please turn off your communication devices as they interfere with our microphones and the taping of our proceedings. I would now like to ask Mr. Wallace to please lead the Board in its prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Ms. Tate, would you now call the row?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Here.
Mr. Burrows? Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Omalola?
Here.
Ms. Queen?
Present.
Ms. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Thornton?
Present. May I now, colleagues, have a motion to adopt the November 21st Board meeting agenda?
So moved.
It's probably moving seconded, that the agenda for November 21st be adopted and unamended. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to the approval of the Board's minutes from our November 7th meeting. A motion is in order.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's probably moving seconded, that the minutes of our November 7th be adopted without modification. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. We will now move to news break, Prince George's County Public Schools at a glance.
This ream of paper may look insignificant, but to a teacher, especially a struggling new teacher, this paper, it's worth its weight in gold. And to a student who normally craves toys and digital devices, a new pair of shoes like these can often let them stand a little taller and get back on their feet. Hi, I'm Dave Zarin. I'm here today to tell you what's been happening in the Prince George's County Public Schools of late. And because we're in the midst of Thanksgiving season, this edition of PGCPS at a glance is all about generosity and giving thanks. At Charles Herbert Flowers High School, Christmas came early for over 200 of the county's newest teachers. At PEEP 2.0, a continuation of the county's professional educator induction program that starts each year in August, the teachers crowded rooms for workshops and lined up for post-it notes, markers, pens, and most coveted of all, reams and reams of paper. This second annual giveaway, spearheaded by Board Vice Chair Edward Burrows, sends an unmistakable message to teachers that even as new members of the Prince George's family, they're much valued and highly respected.
First, they made a good decision by coming to Prince George's County Public Schools. We know they could have been anywhere in our region, but they chose to be a part of our family, so we want them to know that we take care of our family. Number two, our systems leadership, their school board, the superintendent, really does value what they do every single day in the classroom, and this is just a small token to say, thank you.
Getting free school supplies is always going to be a good thing, especially because a lot of times, teachers are- we're spending our own money to buy things, and we do it because we care, we do it because we're passionate. However, it's always good to real- it's always good to have people recognize that we are spending our own money, and that it does take resources for our students to be able to be successful.
If the tables at PEEP were overflowing with school supplies, over at Port Town's Elementary School, it was shoes as far as the eye could see, thanks to two great benefactors, Bob Shoes by Skechers and Souls for Souls, a philanthropic group that has distributed over 35 million shoes worldwide since 2006. The K through 5th grade students at Port Town's, all 1,000 of them, received a brand-new pair of Clog Shoes. After being sized up, often by the CEO herself, the students got to customize their shoes with colored markers, a perfect chance to let their creative juices flow. For the students, a good fit and a bit of bling brought plenty of smiles, lots of gratitude, and even an exuberant dance. Enjoy the holidays, and as our students just reminded us, remember to give thanks.
Thanks to our Board Vice Chair, Dr. Goldson, and your staff for that, that is Prince George's Public Schools at a glance, and we thank you so much. Colleagues, if you would, and to the audience, join me in a moment of silence for five of members of our family who have passed. Mr. Darrell Wayne Green, brother of Gerald Green, building supervisor at DeValle High School. Shawna Kramer, our professional Chapel Forge Early Childhood Center. And Kevin Smack, a teacher at Oxon Hill High School. Rufus Gray, the father of Angela Walton, Office of the Chief of Academics. And finally, Dr. Carol Holland, former Director of Special Education in the Prince George's County School System, if you'll join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Some highlights from the chair. I want to thank all Board members and school system employees for joining the Youth Justice Forum, which was sponsored by the Attorney General's, State's Attorney's Office, and our Board members, Mr. Burrows, as well as Mr. Omalola. It was very successful. I was in attendance, and I want to thank you all for your leadership of that with our State's Attorney. I want to remind everyone that our schools and offices will be closed next Wednesday and Friday, November 27th through the 29th of 2019. We have very important upcoming meetings, again, with our increasingly highly effective committees, of which we're very proud. On December 9th, the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, led by Mr. Wallace, will be meeting. On December 12th, there will be a Board meeting and the CEO's FY '21 budget presentation to the Board, a very, very important meeting there. On December 16th, our Policy and Governance Committee, which is chaired by Mrs. Ahmed, will be meeting. In fact, there's a meeting tomorrow of that committee with the legislative leadership of the Education Committee of the state, the General Assembly Delegation from Prince George's. And I want to thank you, Ms. Ahmed, for organizing that meeting as we prepare for the General Assembly Session. And then, finally, on November, on December 19th, our Academic Achievement Committee, which is led by Mr. Montero, will be meeting. So you can see, we're very well organized as a Board and proceeding in the best interest of our school system. Meetings of the Board of Education will be held here at the SASSA Building in the Board Room. Persons interested in signing up, if you would, please go to Quick Links and sign up under Public Participation. We encourage your participation in our affairs. Before I can conclude my remarks and call on our CEO for her presentation, I want to now acknowledge the presence and invite Mr. Thomas Johnson of the Office of Community Relations and Ms. Erica Berry Wilson from the Office of the County Executive to please come forward and provide us a brief update on the 2020 census. Mr. Thomas and Ms. Wilson, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Thornton, distinguished school board members, and Dr. Goldson. Thank you for having us here this evening. I am Erica Berry Wilson. I serve as the co-chair of the Education Subcommittee of the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee for Prince George's County. We are excited to be here today before you to talk about the importance of the U.S. Census for Prince George's County. I have here today with me Mr. Thomas Johnson, as recognized from the Office of Community Relations, and I also have here with me Ms. Jacqueline Woody from the Office of the County Executive. We are all part of the Complete Count Committee. What we want to achieve today is, one, just to give you some basic facts about the importance of the census to Prince George's County, but most importantly, to solicit your support and your efforts in trying to make sure that every Prince Georgian is counted, because every person deserves to be counted in our, in our community and in Prince George's County. So with that, I will yield the floor to Mr. Johnson, and he will lead you through your presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
But before I start, if possible, I would love for Ms. Woody to come up and speak as well, since we are in this together. So, Ms. Woody.
And, Ms. Woody, I did not acknowledge your presence. Excuse the oversight. You're such a valued-
It's not an oversight, Dr. Thornton. My name was not submitted.
Thank you.
As an integral part of the Census 2020 Team for Prince George's County, I'm pleased to be here this evening, because, again, over the years, I have been a part of promoting census awareness through Prince George's County since 1990. So I'm taking this last opportunity to encourage all of you and all of our residents to be counted. We are proud to be counted, and we need to be counted. Thomas will lead us through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
And thank you all for allowing me to come here and speak today. I'm very excited. The census is something that's very important. It was not as important to me until I had children, right? I did not understand, every 10 years, there is something that happens that can get millions of dollars for my children for the future. And now that we have five, as Christian knows, because we've discussed this, it's important. I want to leave a legacy, and I want to do something that makes impact and makes a difference. And so, what we are doing as a team is asking you all to come alongside our vision for the County Exec, and let's work together to get the biggest count that we've ever had for Prince George's County. So let's go ahead and get started. So what is the ZCNS census? So every 10 years, there, the federal government counts everyone that is in the United States, right? On, there is $675 billion that's available for folks that complete the census. Now, one of the things that we're doing, and that's very important with us here, is there are areas called hard-to-count areas in Prince George's County. Now, the reason being is because there are areas that are significantly, have been undercounted in the past. In 2010, until about 2019, we have lost, because we had an undercount of census, $350 million. And though that money could go to our schools, go to our roads, go to our infrastructure, help the whole county, that's why we're working hard and diligently. Those spaces that you see, and you may have them close on your computer, the red spaces are the ones that we are really targeting. We received a grant from the state of Maryland for $244,000 to help us in that effort, but that is for signage, that is for bus wraps, and so forth, and for mailers. But we also need more help than that, and that's where we need people. We need our schools. We need trusted voices. So, our census outreach strategies. One of the things that the census is doing, as well as our offices, and I say that as in the County Exec's Office and the Office of Community Relations, we have created coloring books. Books that are able to reach the populations that we know are hard to count. It is the ages 5 and below that have historically been hard-to-count ages. And with these books, also, the U.S. Census Bureau has created one. We've seen that, in the past, it has really helped with families. It has helped with children, understanding, and it has also helped with reaching the community. They're also in English and in Spanish as well. Now, I don't know if you all have seen them, but we have flyers, plenty of them that are going out to the community, but this has been created, it was created by Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning, in partnership with, excuse me, the County Exec's Office. And so, this is the flyer that we're utilizing now to go out into the community. It basically gives facts, right? And these are things, we've had conversations with our PPWs, as well as some other folks in the school system, our principals, to share these messages to the parents. I used to work for Department of Social Services as the education coordinator for the foster youth of Prince George's County. And one of the things that we know is that the more information that I was able to get out to the families, the more knowledgeable they were. So, we want the trusted voices to share the messaging to the families in the county. This is also our frequently asked question sheet. Again, it's a little small from there, so you can't really see it, but it is available. We also have documents on our website that can be utilized in 18 different languages as well. So, these are some PGCPS facts that you all know. The students, now, population is 136,000 students in the county. That's a lot of youth. Now, let's put a number sign beside our youth. $18,250 is the amount of money that we lose per person that does not complete the census over a 10-year period. Can you imagine if these children, and we put a dollar sign to that, the amount of money that we lose? So it's important to understand why that's going to help. Growing up in Sea Pleasant, we had what you call a food desert. No stores, no grocery stores. Part of the reason is, is that the accurate count of people that were there was not accurate. So therefore, when businesses would come to the community to see the stores to put there, they would say, "Well, we really don't have enough people to say that this would really have the business that we needed." If we get an accurate count, we can get the businesses that are supposed to come. Have the accurate count of the kids that are in schools as well, in the north part of the county. I know there's overcrowding, but if we can get an accurate count of youth that are in those schools, then we're able to help our schools as well, and our teachers. And, by the way, my wife is a teacher as well. So, this is what we ask for the school system. Census Week, in March at some time, we would love to see the school system have a Census Week where it's focused on everything census-wide. The awesome thing about that is, is that if you go onto the website, usenses.gov, they talk about activities and lessons that can take place in math, class, in English, history, also fun facts, geography, sociology, warm-up activities, and in the Constitutional Day. So it's out there. Information is there. We just really need for the school board to advocate to have this, as well as the arts. I did not see that, but that's something that we can also implement as well, school board. So, the ask, and if we can come from here, and this is, these are just suggestions. You all are doing this every day, so these are just suggestions that we have. So to host a 2020 Census Town Hall, to educate the community about what the census is and why it's important, and why it's important to you, why it matters, right? Establish a PGCPS Census Week in March of 2020. I just asked that. Also, engage PGCPS SGA to participate in the census. It's important to get our youth involved in government and let them understand that they have power, and they can move mountains, but they need to be supported. You all can do that. Implement census strategies in the classroom, as we discussed, with the different course subjects. And also, print out census coloring books to share with PGCPS elementary schools. That's imperative as well. This is my last slide, but it does show the contact information. I have Ms. Erica Berry on there, as well as Megan Thornton. She's part of our team. I don't see her here today, but she has been integral, as well as Ms. Woody, and Jordan Bachman-Coburn, and myself. This slide you have, there are also links on this slide to the different websites, so if you want to pull up information, or if you need us to give you all more information, we'll be more than happy to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for that presentation, and the invitation for us to collaborate with the County Executive on this, which I'm sure that Dr. Goldson and the Board will be willing to do so. I will now turn the floor over to our Chief Executive Officer for her report. Dr. Goldson.
Thank you. Good evening. On Tuesday, I joined Glen Arton Woods Elementary School students and staff to celebrate their National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence status. This fall, Glen Arton Woods was named a 2019 Exemplary High Performing School by the United States Department of Education for a second time, earning the award previously in 2006. Glen Arton Woods Elementary School joins more than 360 public and private schools across the nation and being recognized for outstanding academic performance of progress and closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. We could not be prouder to celebrate this honor with the Glen Arton Woods School community. Congratulations to Principal Cecilia Boulding, her entire team, students, and their families on their excellent work. Congratulations are also in order for Oxon Hill High School and Kenmore Middle School on being recognized as the 2019-2020 National PTA Schools of Excellence. Oxon Hill and Kenmore are among only six schools in Maryland honored by the National PTA for their commitment to building an inclusive and welcoming school community. Schools that enroll in the National PTA program make a year-long commitment to create an action plan for school improvement based on PTA's national standards for family-school partnerships and transformative family engagement. Honories receive celebration tools and automatic consideration for an award in the amount of $2,000 for each school. Lastly, as we prepare to celebrate the Thanksgiving holiday next week, I want to express my sincere appreciation for all of our staff members and the Prince George's County Public School family. I appreciate all that you do each and every day, and enjoy your break.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson, for your report. Colleagues, we have 10 of our citizens who have registered for public comment, and I want to invite them now to come forward, as I call their names, and ask them to please abide by the regulations that they agreed to when they signed up. Our first speaker is Noah Milhouse. He was a student at the Felicity Williams School. Please come forward regarding the Spanish immersion program.
Buenas tardes, Dr. Goldson, Dr. Thornton, members de la junta y liderazgos de PGCPS. Mi nombre es Noah Milhouse. Yo estoy en cuatro cuadrados en la escuela Felicity Williams Spanish Immersion. Gracias por darme una escuela de inmersión. Vine hoy para decirles por qué yo quiero una escuela intermedia. Yo quiero aprender más español. Me gustaría que todos lo aprobaron para no tener que ir a una escuela intermedia normal y solo aprender inglés. Thank you for approving the boundary so I could go to Spanish Immersion Middle School. Gracias por aprobar el límite para poder ir a una escuela intermedia y aprender español. Gracias, nin, pu jin, bae, y man wo, kei, shang, si bae ya, shong ju. And that was in Chinese. Thank you, and have a good night.
Dr. Goldson, that's Prince George's County proud, right?
That's right.
Okay, we'll move on from that. Gosh, that's very impressive, young man. Ms. Michelle Clark, if you'll come forward, please, regarding legislative priorities.
I'm always happy to hear from our students. I read the joint legislative priorities that were on the Board docs this week, and I just wanted to mention that there is a place where we can come together as teachers, educators, hopefully PGCEA and the Board, especially when it comes to supporting the full state funding for Maryland's public schools, including the funding for the Kerwin Commission. This is extremely important for us as a school system, as over a 10-year period, it would bring approaching $1 billion to us in state and local funding. This is necessary for programs such as expanding community schools. As a pre-K teacher, expanding pre-K programs is near and dear to my heart. Of course, as teachers, we would like to be compensated as the professionals we are, have appropriate professional development, restorative practices, and numerous other programs and policies that would benefit not only us, but our students, and they're the most important piece here. Over the past month, the Maryland State Education Association has held forums all over the state, actually, in support of Blueprint for Maryland's Future, including three here in Prince George's County. October 10th at Laurel High School, October 23rd at Bowie Center for the Performing Arts, and this Monday, November 18th, at Oxon Hill High School. Our grassroots organizing team at PGCEA worked closely with MSEA to bring our teachers, parents, community stakeholders, and community leaders to the forums to learn more about what the funding formulas recommended by the Kerwin Commission will mean and how they will impact our students. I'd like to thank Dr. Thornton for coming out for two of those. The first one happened to be during one of your Board meetings, so it wasn't possible for him to be here, and Dr. Kerwin was also there on Monday. A number of our Board members have also come out to support us at these events. I see an opportunity here for us to look at this as something we can present together. We should be a united front when it comes to this funding. I'm not speaking on behalf of PGCEA. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as the grassroots organizing team chair. But I would like to thank you all for your support in this effort, the important work Dr. Thornton has done with the Commission to get this right, and the difference it's going to make for our students, because, again, they are the number-one priority, and that's why we're all here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and for your leadership in this area. The next speaker is Dolores Milhouse regarding language immersion to middle school.
Good evening. Oh, sweet Mary, look at that. I broke the mic. Good evening. I am nervous. I never get nervous. I've been here probably eight million times, but I am nervous today. But I take that back, I am not. I am excited. Hola, ¿cómo está? Mi nombre es Dolores Milhouse. That is the extent that I have. Yay! If I could have my language immersion parents from Overlook, Caesar Chavez, and Philadelphia Willing to stand up behind me in support of, I come today after seven years of advocating on behalf of the expansion of language immersion, and I am proud. I am excited, and I am very hopeful that what we have been asking for over the past seven-plus years will be approved today, which is a continuation of the program. We were able to see this week and going into our schools and watching our children debate in their math classes, in their target language. We were able to hear students last month who came and advocated on behalf of themselves in the target language, and all I could say was that's what I've been dreaming about for seven years, that I- That I am not just standing here because I believe in the school system, but I'm standing here and I'm able to see these children learn a language. They know how to speak out for themselves. They can do it now in two languages. They will soon be able to do it in three languages, and they have a level of confidence that exhibits being PGCPS proud. And so I stand here because I believed in this school system. I stand here because my family and my loving, dear husband allowed me to come out countless nights to advocate. And he took up the realm from the back. I stand here with the parents who could be here tonight, the children who could be here tonight, and I am thanking you because I believe, I'm not begging, but I am thanking you for believing in the dream that you already had set in place with the French immersion, and we just wanted you to build upon it. And so I will continue to come back and advocate for the quality programs across the board. I will continue to advocate for us to see us who, in knowing who we are as PGCPS proud and telling everyone about the great school district that we are and making the mark not only in the state of Maryland, but throughout the U.S. and throughout the world. So thank you. I appreciate you, and thank you for believing in a dream that was already set on its course years and years ago. Thank you. I feel like saying amen.
Thank you, Ms. Milhouse. The next speaker is Ms. Gina Bowler regarding Spanish Immersion Middle School. You'll come forward, please.
Good evening. I'm very happy to be here as a long-term advocate along with Dolores Milhouse, an advocate or supporter for Spanish immersion here at, here in Prince George's County Public Schools. These are my daughters, a fifth grader and a third grader at Overlook. So I'm definitely in strong support of the proposal to extend the Spanish immersion program to middle school. I also want to note that my daughter was in the inaugural kindergarten class, and I was on the PTA Board as the co-chair of the advocacy and legislative committee from them, from that time until just last, the end of last school year. I was also one of two Overlook parent representatives to the Prince George's County Public Schools Language Immersion Task Force. And I also was co-founder. You can go back. I was also a co-founder of, of My Bilingual Child, a grassroots effort that Dolores and I and other parents, we worked really hard to, to get support for the school systems to start a language immersion program. We did community outreach. We had advocacy activities and events in public places like food courts and Bowie, libraries, community centers, and in our homes. And, and a lot of us worked really hard to, to generate support for the, for the program. So I'm very happy that we're here today and that before you is the, the proposal. I also want to note that the very first time that I ever gave public testimony was in support of Spanish immersion in Prince George's County Public Schools. And that was nearly 10 years ago when the former board was conducting a search for a CEO and they wanted to get, or a superintendent at the time, and they wanted to get input. I was inspired, motivated to come out because I believed then, like I do now, that providing a world-class education whereby our graduates will be bilingual or multilingual and have cross-cultural skills. I believe that's a huge benefit to them and to their community, and it will just be very beneficial to us all. So that's, that's why I'm here and in favor. I hope that you approve the proposal. And I also want to say to parents, current and prospective families of the Spanish immersion programs, stick with us and you're part of the success of the program. And even if ultimately you decide, whether it's logistical reasons or just the sheer number of opportunities that the school district offers now in terms of educational programs, you can still be an advocate, a volunteer, a supporter so that this opportunity is available to other families. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and we'll now call on Ms. Teresa Mitchell-Dutley, who's president of the Prince George's County Educators Association. Ms. Dutley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the past 21 days, I've been writing every day about what I'm thankful for on Facebook. And today I am thankful for the Kerwin Commission because today they voted as a commission to support the recommendations of the Formula Committee, which Dr. Thornton you served on. And I'm thankful for that. This week has made me even more thankful for that because I know in my heart that our educators love our children, and I'm thankful for that. I'm also thankful for Robin McNair, the community, the restorative practices coordinator in the school system. Because this week, more than any other week, has shown the need for restorative practices training for all of us because it needs to be a cultural shift. Because the harm that is done when someone speaks ugly to someone, when somebody yells at somebody, when somebody is disrespectful to someone, it creates a harm not only to the person that you've offended, but also to the rest of the people who are in the environment. I cried all weekend, this weekend, over what has happened. And I had a conversation with Dr. Golson about this. And in our conversation, after I hung up, in my heart, I felt that she gets it and that she understands what educators are going through. I don't condone violence on any way, shape, or form, but what I do condone is us not fighting together as a county, as Prince George's County, for our children to make sure that we have the things that our children need, to make sure that we have trauma-informed education training, to make sure that we have social and emotional learning supports, to make sure that we expand the restorative practices training so that it becomes a culture in Prince George's County, to make sure that we have the guidance counselors and the psychologists that we need so that students can be referred for the help that they need. I am thankful. I'm thankful for being in Prince George's County, and I'm thankful because I know we have the strength to make a difference. I also would like to say that I'm very concerned about the charter applications. I'm very concerned that Prince George's County is continuing and moving in the direction of charters. I don't think that our children should be traded on Wall Street and for corporate profit. So I know you're taking that under your consideration today, and I would like you to be aware that those children at Turning Point Academy have other opportunities to find great places in Prince George's County schools.
Thank you, Ms. Dutley. The next speaker is Ms. Tanya Wingfield, speaking regarding school safety. Don't see her, so the next speaker is Stephanie Powell regarding field trips. Ms. Powell, don't see Ms. Powell, so Habib. I'm sorry, please. And if Mr. Ja would be preparing to speak next. Ms. Powell.
Good evening to the board and to Dr. Golson, and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Dr. Golson, for briefly addressing this on your telehall meeting, and board member Sonia Williams for assistant with this as well. I'm Stephanie Powell-Williams, and I'm here to speak to you on this topic or issue of field trip. This is a topic that I'm very passionate about. However, it is one that comes with many setbacks due to the difficult time-consuming and drawn-out process which prevents our scholars from experiencing such rich learning opportunities that can only happen outside of the classroom. Let me share some key benefits of field trips. For the teachers, it is used to provide the scholars with real-world experiences that cannot be afforded within the classroom. For the students, they're allowed to gain access to tools and environment outside of their school building. It assists with the socio-emotional growth and improve academic performance for our scholars. It also helps scholars to retain the information that they have been exposed to. According to the CLOT, C, the Council of Learning Outside of the Classroom in UK, states, "We believe that every child should be given the opportunity to experience life and lessons beyond the classroom walls as a regular part of growing up." These experiences expand the horizon of young people, opening their eyes to the wonders of areas such as art, heritage, culture, adventure, and the natural world. As we just heard from our wonderful language immersion scholars and supporters, field trips should provide, should be provided, should provide our scholars not only with opportunities within the DMV areas, but also it should go beyond. And our scholars must be able to have the opportunity to explore abroad in order for them to be successful, in order for them to be able to compete globally. Our scholars need to be able to get this in order to be successful. We have scholars that go, they go to the farm. When we go to Washington, D.C., we see a lot of outside students who are coming into the United States to explore what goes on here. We should afford our scholars the same opportunity to be able to compete and experience those culture outside as we're expanding to, you know, the, our Chinese immersions and our language immersion. We should definitely afford our scholars to do that so that the impact can be all around. They can become rich in terms of their, the dialogue, in terms of their academic, in terms of the vocabulary. So I thank you, and I know that you guys are going to make sure that the opportunities that you give to our, to our teachers as well as our scholars will be one that the field trip process will not be so mundane, but we will also be able to expose them outside of the country as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Mr. Habib Ja regarding Eid. Please come forward, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to come here this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the chair of the board, the vice chair, and all members of the board. I am here on behalf of PGCMC. We are an organization that is affiliated with many other massages in the area. We're here to support, I'm here actually along with them to support the reason why we're here for the Eid program. First of all, a growing number of American school districts have begun to recognize, you know, the two Muslim holidays. And I believe I was here the first time, you know, to speak on behalf of this issue. I want to give you a brief example and remonstrate on some of those county participating on the Eid holiday in Maryland. In April 2019, the district board announced it would be recognizing the Muslim holiday of Eid al-Fitr during its adoption of the 2019-20 year, which is in Detroit. Secondly, the Islamic calendar is a lunar calendar. It's something that we've already mentioned before. In addition to that, the Eid holiday and the Eid equality effort are underway in Montgomery County. And I think that was already something that was announced in the past, and there are the partakings going on there to ensure that Muslim students have the holiday. Secondly, on November the 10th, 2019, the school board in Baltimore gave Muslim students a chance to celebrate their holidays. The Baltimore County has approved unanimously to close the public school for giving Muslim students in Baltimore a chance to experience the holiday. Why I'm here today is to articulate, you know, the view that we, within the Muslim community, had and ensure that this board, whom we truly believe are here to serve all of us, will give this particular attention that we have like a non-divided attention. And I hope that whatever we stood for is something that will be, you know, taken into consideration by this board. I want to thank all of you for giving us the time and myself to be here to speak on behalf of this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Derek Terry, is an individual teacher regarding recruitment and retention.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the board, as well as CEO. My name is Derek Terry, and I'm here today as a Maryland taxpayer, education advocate, retired 28-year military reserve war veteran, and a former special educator for the Prince George's County Public Schools with 18 cumulative years of teaching. So why am I here? I want to address low teacher retention and the declining teachers' morale as well as to be a voice for thousands of teachers who fear retaliation or microaggression if they publicly express their concerns. During the latter part of 2018 academic year, PGCPS was short some 800 teachers for reasons ranging from teacher retirements and/or high turnover rate. Some of you may make the notion that low pay is the main reason.
Excuse me, sir. Ms. King, would you start the timer, please? I'm sorry, sir, go ahead, please.
Some of you may make the notion that low pay is the main reason, but the following reasons are equally valid and attribute to PGCPS difficulties retaining teachers. You retain teachers by treating them as authority figures and actually giving them some real authority. You retain teachers by being sincere with the constructive input about policies that affect how teachers effectively do their job. You retain teachers when the teachers' associations weeds out those that consistently work for the best interest of elected officials or selves versus the dues-paying members. You retain teachers by fairly sharing the blame for students' low standardized test scores, and you can start by holding parents and students accountable. You see, in PGCPS, students and parents have more rights than responsibilities, while teachers have more responsibilities than rights. You have tasked teachers to build relationships to help engage students in learning, but in fact, they are teaching them a one-sided relationship. And as the years go on, the gap of responsibilities becomes wider, and ultimately, you have teachers with very little power because you have succumbed to the fear of lawsuits or bad press. Everyone thinks they can do a teacher's job better than a teacher, but no one wants to be a teacher. You want superheroes but have little respect or reverence for what they do. You would rather have them keep risking themselves, saving students' parents' pride with a smile, all wearing kryptonite ankle bracelets. They cannot be Superman and Lex Luthor at the same time. Transition heroes and villains at the same time do not exist. You have policy procedures out of the wazoo but do an awful job of implementing them to the letter. Every day, your lack of reverence in implemented policies continues to put their lives at risk and endangers their overall well-being. You cannot have it both ways any longer. No one should walk into work knowing if they will leave work in the same state of mind. They should not fear students, but rather garner support from administration to help de-escalate and assist them in the service of those they all serve. I always believe that to whom much is given, much is expected. Our teachers and our students are still waiting on what is expected. I'm going to leave you with something my late grandfather told me back in the day in Birmingham, Alabama. Sometimes your own kind can be the worst kind. But I reckon if we don't learn to work together, some of our kind will continue to fall behind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Delvin Champagne. Is he here? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Delvin Champagne. I'm going to give a shout-out to Spanish immersion. I served on the board of the Door Kennedy French Immersion PTA Board. My name is Delvin Champagne. I am a, I'm the executive director of Strategic Collegiate. We are a, a college and career readiness mentorship program focusing on biomedical engineering and health sciences. My background, my clinical background, I'm licensed in the area of occupational therapy and system technology, working with kids with IEP and 504 diagnoses and disabilities. While I was in Howard Graduate School, I was afforded the opportunity, while I was doing my graduate work in public health, I was afforded the opportunity to go to, to a fellowship program, a joint fellowship program that, it's a program, it's a joint program between Howard and Harvard. that, it's a program, it's a joint program between Howard and Harvard University Medical School. And the program is a diversity program that goes from high school through post-doc. And it's for African-American, Latino, Asian, Hispanic, low-income rural communities and so forth. And so, through my nonprofit Strategic Collegiate, we were able to secure 10 seats for the Talented 10 Prince George's County Public School students for the Spring 2020 Biomedical STEM Program in Boston. We attempted to do this program about two years ago in 2018, but in the spring, some crazy things happened, and you probably know about that, and so my program was on hold. So we secured 10 slots for Prince George's County Public School students for April 2020. And it's a great program at the Harvard Medical School, but it's a free program if you can get to Boston. They feed you, they have panels, mentorship programs, you find a mentor, you find internships, scholarships, college fair, how to apply for college, you know, labs and so forth for biomedical and STEM. And so, our program needs $15,000 to take, to take 10 students and five mentors to Boston. It's in April. Prince George's County, PGCPs has great biotech programs at Duval, Aerospace, Oxon Hill, Flowers. And especially in my district, Blaisenberg has the biotech program, the biomedical program. And so, it's my time, oh man. And so, the, what I leave you with is that the deadline for student application is on December 12th. Yes. And so, we have the 10 slots reserved, and I would love for these great students who, to go to Boston, because in 2018, they weren't able to go because they applied, and it got canceled right in the spring, so they weren't able to go. But, so I have a, I'm leaving this packet here for the program for Dr. Golson. She can have it, and I have a program packet for her.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, and thanks to all of the speakers who came to speak to the Board tonight. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Golson for an introduction of Item 7.1 under Governance. Second reader, Dr. Golson.
Item 7.1 requires Board approval of the boundary and grade structure improvements for school years 2020 through 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. A motion is in order.
So moved.
It's improper move and seconded that the boundary recommendation from Dr. Golson be approved. I now recognize Ms. Ahmed.
Colleagues, I had a public community meeting in District 5 with a few dozen parents from Patuxent Elementary School last week regarding the boundary changes specific to Patuxent Elementary School. And I just wanted to thank Principal Bunch and all of the parents, students, and community members that came out to that meeting, including Ms. Queen and Ms. Williams, who are standing with me, answering questions from the community. And at the end of it, I think Ms. Williams really, she, she brought out District 9. She got folks really excited to be at a school in District 9 where they rock. And, and, but one thing that was mentioned at that meeting, Dr. Golson, that actually Ms. Williams planted the seed for was around having Patuxent be a formal IB feeder school on the elementary level, since all students from that school will now be going into an IB middle school. And so I was, my request is that we, is it possible that we look into that? Folks were quite interested and excited about that prospect, myself included.
Thank you for examining that, Dr. Golson. Ms. Queen, did I see your light? Please.
Mine's just more of a thank you to Dr. Golson and her staff for making these changes. It's been so awesome for me to constantly hear my Phyllis E. Williams students and parents come and speak Spanish when I have no clue what they're saying. But I listen well attentively, but I understand them wanting a middle school. So again, we thank you for making this change. I'm happy to have them at one of my schools. Thank you all again.
Thank you. Colleagues, the vote is on Item 7.1. Don't see any opposition. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect that it's unanimous. We will now move to Item 7, Item 9, 9.1 Legislative Matters for 2020. And I'll now yield the floor to Board Member Ahmed for an introduction of Item 9.1.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Policy and Governance Committee, I'm pleased to provide these legislative priorities to the Board. Additionally, I'd like to take a few minutes to provide some information about our committee's charge and membership to the public before us. The Policy and Governance Committee is charged with facilitating strategic planning for the school system and providing oversight of Board policy, legislative, and governmental matters. The committee is working to ensure that Board governing policies are current, compliant with federal, state, and county laws, and consistent with best practices in public education. By December of each year, the committee shall develop the legislative agenda for the year for the Board to consider, which is what is before you today, colleagues. The committee will also review proposed federal, state, and county legislation and recommend positions to the Board of Education, as well as monitoring the development of Board policies and associated administrative procedures to ensure effective implementation of approved legislation. My colleagues in this work are Board Members Pamela Boozer-Strether, who serves as the Committee Vice Chair, Joshua Thomas, our Board Chair Alvin Thornton, and Student Member of the Board Joshua Amalola. Our work is supported by Board Executive Director Ms. Suzanne King, Chief of Staff Christian Rhodes, Acting General Counsel and Legislative Advocate Demetra Tobias, Board Administrative Assistant Nise Ellis, and other PGCPs staff as needed. Our committee actually had our first meeting on Monday, November 11th, and we discussed our committee work plan at that time, which is available on Board Docs. In summary, at every committee meeting, we will discuss items from the following categories. Committee Administrative Items, Overview of Expected Outcomes, New Policies, Policies to Review, Compliance, Administrative Procedures to Review, Legislative, and Unfinished Business. The combination of these categories fulfill the charge of our committee and our responsibility as legislative leaders to the citizens of Prince George's County. Committee leadership will come together with Board staff to determine the agenda for each committee meeting, addressing the topics set within the work plan. In addition to discussing our work plan, we also receive an overview of the Chief Executive Officer's expected outcomes or goals for the year that fall within the purview of our committee. This is what happened at the November 11th meeting. We also discussed the need to have a comprehensive policy on policy development and adoption, and discuss our legislative priorities. As you may see on Board Docs, we are recommending four major priorities when it comes to our legislative agenda. The first is support for full state funding for Maryland's public schools. The second is support for robust state funding for school construction and renovation projects. The third is support for increased state funding to support the work of local school systems, to ensure the Safe to Learn Act is implemented with fidelity. And the last is support for continued governance autonomy for local Boards of Education. Although we're recommending four priorities to focus our attention and advocacy efforts, we also recommend working collaboratively with MAB, which is the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, and PSAM, which is the Public School Superintendent's Association of Maryland. The Boards, it's important to note that the Board's adoption of these four priorities does not prohibit us from considering important legislation that may arise during the session. So if you all have any thoughts or, or specific legislation pieces, please do refer those to me and Ms. Boozer-Strether. Also, as noted in my memo, the committee believes adopting these priorities is an emergency item for the Board, given that the Prince George's County House delegation is scheduled to meet and have a hearing before our next Board meeting. And it's critical that we have a legislative, we have legislative priorities to be in a position to provide testimony if needed during that hearing. With that in mind, I offer the following motion for your consideration. On behalf of the Policy and Governance Committee, I move that the Board of Education adopt as an emergency item the four legislative priorities as outlined in our memo to Dr. Thornton. Given that it was moved by the committee, a second is not needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair of the Committee. That motion is before us, and I see Mr. Wallace's light.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Committee Chairwoman Hamid for the explanation. To answer my first question regarding the difference, it has been my experience in the five years I've been on the Board that we have had a more robust agenda as opposed to priorities, so I thank you for that explanation. A question to you and to the committee, was there any discussion around a priority to support our Maryland historically black colleges and universities? As a, one of the priorities?
Ms. Ahmed, I recognize you.
We had not, but that's a good idea.
I think so too. I'm not, I'm, I'm not a graduate of HBCU. I was talking to the Chair backstage, I guess you want to call it. I'm the poster child of this whole issue. I'm a black student that went to two primarily white institutions, Towson, the University of Baltimore, was at the epicenter of the Morgan State issue with state funding for comparable programs. I should have went to Morgan State had they been fully supported by the, by the state in terms of the advertisement, quite honestly. I think that this Board is a governing body for the school system that is a pipeline for so many HBCUs throughout the state. With having one in our county that we have so many partnerships with, a lot of our educators and principals and administrators come from, I think we need to have a very strong statement, whether it's tonight, going forward, when legislation is proposed in, in January by the Maryland Legislative Black Caucus, by my delegate, Delegate Barnes, we need to have a strong conversation, and I believe a letter of support for whatever legislation comes forward in support of those HBCUs.
Ms. Ahmed, as the, as the Chair of the Committee and the presenter, would you accept that as a, as a friendly amendment to the priority list?
If we can spell out.
You need some more time to consider it.
We, I think it makes sense to, offline, or, or for Mr. Wallace to provide a recommendation for our committee to look at.
Mr. Wallace, if you would do that and get that to Ms. Ahmed, and we'll get it back before the Board, quickly.
After the break.
Okay, Ms. Queen.
I just wanted to agree with Mr. Wallace, and I'm thinking, thinking about that because that is so important as a parent of a child who came through Prince George's County Public School, who went to Bowie State University. And I know there's a lot of our kids who have came through our school system, who have went through a university, and there's a lot that is still coming. I think it is up to us to set an example and make sure that we are in support of this because our children will be using HBCUs. So again, I do thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace, and if you'll collaborate with Ms. Ahmed in that regard. Colleagues, the vote is on the motion as made by the Committee Chair. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect that it's unanimous, Ms. King. I'll now yield the floor to Dr. Golson to introduce Item 9.2.
Item 9.2 requires Board approval of the lease purchase refinancing agreement.
Motion is in order. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Sent.
It's improper move and seconded that Item 9.2, as an emergency item, be approved. Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. I appreciate the acknowledgement. This right here is a very interesting agenda item. One, because it, it shows how strategic we are in using our finance. So I'd like to thank Mr. H for doing that. And just reading the agenda item, how we are refinancing the, something that was done in 2010, and we're able to use that money to help support some things that we have done through the reconciliation process and all that. So this is just an amazing process. And when we start to connect the dots on what we do here as a Board with what you all do as staff, looking at what we approved last month with the bus and textbook leasing, I think it's great that we can always go back and revisit some things and find some savings and re, and put it back into how we do our business and the system. So I just wanted to say thank you for being strategic, and thank you for sharing this information so we can begin to connect the dots, to show that you all are doing more than just come to us and presenting things and forgetting about them. So I appreciate the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ahmed.
No, I wanted to echo on that. Thank you to Dr. Golson and Chief Herbman for finding those cost savings. You all know Mental Health Supports is very close to my heart. And so to see these school psychologists, FDEs, be able to be funded through savings is phenomenal. Thank you, well done.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed, and Ms. Queen, and then we'll move to a vote. Ms. Queen.
Thank you, I actually want to dito. And I just want to say the importance of in today's society of putting the money toward mental health. We all know that the issues that are going on in society, not just in our school system, but in a lot of homes. So I truly appreciate, especially our CFO, who actually took the time to do this. You rock in District 9, but we've loyalty in District 6, so thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Queen. Colleagues, the vote is on the motion. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect that it's unanimous, Ms. King. We will now have a motion to approve actions taken in executive session. It's improper move and seconded that we will approve items regarding labor negotiations, personnel matters, CEO report, report from the Board Executive Director, Administrative Matters, internal audit, employee appeals. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. A motion to adjourn. It's improper move and seconded. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, colleagues.